Coram being present, I'll call our special town meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and join us if you wish. Michael Guyette, interim police chief, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, please be seated. Thank you, Chief Guyette. Good evening, fellow citizens of Southampton. I'm Robert Floyd, your town moderator. I appreciate your votes, your support, and it's a privilege to conduct your town meetings. Thank you very much. Warrant returned, town of Southampton. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Southampton by posting an attested copy at the Southampton Town Hall and five other places designated for the posting of such notices fourteen days before a holding said meeting. Constable Michael O'Guyette. Date posted, October 2nd, 2015. They were posted at the following locations: Stop &amp; Save, Trading Post, Pure Food, Big Y, County Liquors, and Southampton Liquors. Southampton Beer &amp; Wine Liquors. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof at six usual places in said town, fourteen days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as aforementioned, giving under our hands this first day of October in the year 2015. Signed by Select Board Elizabeth Moten, Shannon Cutler, Charlie Koenicki. A true attested copy, Michael Guyette, Constable. And I hand the warrant over as read to our elected Southampton Town Clerk, Jeanne Domina, who's sitting next to our elected deputy town moderator. I participate in East Hampton's Board of Directors, East Hampton Media's Board of Directors, for which there is no compensation, and there is no compensation for the privilege of serving Southampton as your Cemetery Commission Superintendent also. Tonight, it is your meeting. You can vote any way your heart and conscience suggest. My role as our town moderator is simply to facilitate, to provide an open process that you trust, and to administer rules and guidelines in an even-handed manner, not to assure any particular outcome. My responsibility tonight is to be as fair and considerate as I possibly can to encourage all sides to be heard. Your responsibility tonight is to exercise your democracy, to question, to debate, to discuss, to comment, to amend, and to table any motion, all in a civilized way as you see fit. The executive branch of our town government, our select board with cooperation or our finance committee, have finalized the articles for tonight's special town meeting. Their work is done. We are the legislative branch of our town's government. Our meetings are conducted in accordance with mass general laws, our bylaws, and traditional custom and practices we have followed for many years with guidance by the principles and rules of conduct in Town Meeting Time, a handbook of parliamentary law. I have it here. This is an organic process as our customs, traditions, and practices evolve. When I ask for discussion and you are ready to contribute something new, please walk to the microphone up front. When it is your turn, please state your name and address clearly and begin, and speak only on the motion under the article at hand. Once you're at the mic, proceed. Please ask me while you speak, though, to guide you to create your own motion if necessary, this perhaps being your first or second town meeting. This is my duty. The plan today is for you to speak no more than five minutes on any article, except to correct an error. All discussions must be relevant to a motion before us. Please allow everyone an opportunity to be heard before you request to speak a second time on an article. Remarks should be concise, to the point, and not too repetitious. Experience Seven Streets well, that our minds are rarely changed after the first five minutes of a speech. All speakers, please face me and always address me, your town moderator, with your opinions, questions, and answers. This is meant to prevent lecturing, bullying, intimidation, and cross-examinations inadvertently or otherwise. Thank you all for your patience and respecting everyone this evening. Can I have a motion for Article One, please?
Mr. Moderator, I am Bob Cozab, Chairman of the Southampton Historical Commission, sponsor of this article. I move the town to vote to amend the general bylaw for the town of Southampton.
We just speak right into the mic like it's a ice cream cone.
I'll start again. Move the town, vote to amend the general bylaw for the town of Southampton by the addition of Section 1E to Article 7 entitled Building Permits, and the addition of Article 37 entitled Preservation of Historically Significant Buildings, as written in the attachment.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Mr. Moderator, again, Bob Cozab, 181 College Highway, Chairman of the Historical Commission. The background of this article is that it has been investigated since the mid-'90s. In 2013, the town-approved master plan directed the Historical Commission to pass a demolition delay bylaw. Since that time, we, as a commission, have attended many seminars, and this draft before you today was drafted with the help of Mass Historic, PVPC, Pinear Valley Planning Commission, and has had input by the building inspector, the planning board, and town council. Under present laws, a demolition requires a permitting process that is issued by the building inspector. The building inspector, so long as he is satisfied that his requirements have been met, can issue a demolition permit. One of those requirements is not the historical significance of the building under question. So, this brings us to this proposal that we're going to vote on today. What does it do? The proposal offers the community a window of opportunity. I'm going to say that again because that's an important phrase. Window of opportunity to protect historical resources deemed significant. What the law says, I'm going to try and summarize for you, that an application for a demolition permit involving a structure which is 100 years old and listed on the Massachusetts Cultural Resources Inventory gets referred to the Historical Commission within a seven-day period of that request. Hundred years is not necessary to define, however, the Mass Cultural Resources Inventory probably is not something you're all familiar with. The inventory is a state database. Between 1987 and 2011, the town of Southampton hired consultants to identify resources that might be meaningful to the community. Individual applications were sent to the state for inclusion in that macros inventory. The applications contain a lot of information about significance of those properties and therefore are important. So to go back to what the general bylaw says, it says that within, that this request, if it meets this criteria, gets referred to the Historical Commission, and within fifteen days of receiving that request, the commission must decide whether that property can be considered significant or not. If it decides that it is not significant, then a notification is given to the building inspector. The building inspector, so long as his requirements are met, can issue a permit. If it decides, this is the Historical Commission now, that it is conceivably a significant property, then the commission must, within thirty days, hold a permanent, a public hearing where everyone that has a say in this can be invited to. After that public hearing, or even at that public hearing, the commission must decide by vote whether that property is preferably preserved. If it decides that it is not preferably preserved, then a permit can be issued so long as all the criteria of the building inspector are concerned. If it decides that it is preferably preserved, then the twelve-month delay comes into play. The obvious question here is why twelve months? That twelve-month period is the most important time involved in this whole general bylaw. It is the time when discussion takes place between the applicant as to trying to find a feasible alternative to demolition. That discussion may take in a whole series, it may involve consultants, inevitably it involves money, it may involve applying for grants. Applying for grants is a long process. I know of some grants that are for preservation that are, that come about once a year and only once a year. The state experience with these laws is that twelve months is perhaps not even long enough to discuss this sort of thing. Hundred and forty-five communities have this sort of law. One-third of them are twelve months or longer so far as the delay period is concerned. Many are currently talking about extending that delay period beyond the twelve, or eighteen, or even into the twenty-four month period because of experience in how long it takes to resolve some of these things. So, two things can happen. An agreement is reached with the party asking for this permit, or during, any time during that twelve-month period, the Historical Commission can, in writing, say to the building inspector that the purpose of the law has been satisfied. And so far as the commission is concerned, if we so vote, so far as the commission is concerned, then a permit could be issued again so long as all the items of his office are concerned. Another thing that could happen is that twelve months goes by, we cannot reach agreement as to what can happen. The twelve-month delay period expires, the building inspector is then notified in letter, by letter, that the period has expired, he can issue a permit so long as his criteria has been satisfied. As you can see, this is a voluntary process. Petitioners have the obligation to participate in discussion. We in Southampton have lost some significant buildings because we have not had this sort of law. Those of you that were around when the Grange was demolished, the Grange with its Tiffany windows, nothing could be done. There have been buildings that have been demolished or dismantled and moved out of town. I believe that there might even have been at least one case where buildings were lost and commercial aspects were brought into that. We have also had some successes on a voluntary basis. The house, Ebenezer Kingsley House that I currently live in, was close to being demolished because it had been condemned. The Conant family put a considerable amount of time into restoring that building and it is, and restoring it properly. My wife and I live in that today. The most recent example of a voluntary restoration is on the corner of East Street and Route 10. It was the, it was a post office, it was Uncle Fred's gun shop, it was the market in town, and a voluntary restoration was done very successfully, and that house has been sold. There was talk at one time that that particular property should have been demolished. I'm glad it wasn't. Another example is that one of our selectmen live in a house and did a, is currently living in a house, and did a voluntary restoration there, so it can be done. I urge that you vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this article? Seeing none? Whoa, sorry. Come right up to the mic.
Charlie Koenicki, 146 Valley Road. I've been reviewing the handout relative to this article. I've been reviewing the handout relative to this article.
Yes.
And first concern is the fact that we're taking an advisory board and making them into a regulatory board. And if you look at Section 5 Administration, "The commission may adopt such rules and regulations as are necessary to administer the terms of this bylaw." I would move a motion that that sentence be struck out of this.
We have a motion to amend the motion. Do we have a second? Motion is made and seconded. We have a discussion on the amendment. Pros and cons, yes or no's?
I'm looking at Section 5 Administration. "The commission may adopt such rules and regulations as are necessary to administer the terms of this bylaw." Right now, the Historic Commission is an advisory board. This sentence makes you a regulatory board that you're allowed to take and expand on this bylaw for regulatory issues.
It's better for all of you to address me.
So, the thought is strike that one sentence so that what you vote on doesn't have an open end for regulations. I'm talking right there. The first sentence, mine says Section 5, yours says Section 4.
Yeah, because yours starts with two and it should start with one. That's because your copy starts at two and not one, so if you just back one off all the way down. We're talking about the same one.
There's been some clerical administrative errors. We will pick them up perhaps as the night goes on, so no intention for any misdirection, but...
I read that sentence to me, literally, and it says, "as are necessary to administer the terms of this bylaw," the administration of the bylaw and not the regulation.
And I read it that it means that you, as the commission...
Talk right into the mic.
You have, as you as the commission have the authority, once this is voted on, to modify your regulation through the administration end of it. And what I'm trying to say is, is if we're going to have a bylaw in town, I don't want to have a bylaw with an open end on the other side of it that people can modify.
So we have an amendment on the floor, and we're simply discussing the value or lack thereof of that amendment, and we will vote on that amendment. Anybody like to address that? Just, please, just step, you don't need to be invited. You can even be in line if you so wish.
Good evening. I'm Don Warren, 230 College Highway, and I'm a member of the Southampton Historic Commission, like my, like Bob Cozab. Been working on this for a number of years. The interpretation that I read in that clause in Section 5, I don't feel so, certainly the intent was not to give us the right to change the scope of the general bylaw. I think what it's doing is allowing us to negotiate, if we get to that point where the twelve-month delay has been enacted and we're entering into a dialogue with the homeowner about what other options might they consider and how could we help them consider those options, it allows us to negotiate and within the parameters of the bylaw, but it doesn't allow us to change the parameters of the bylaw. It just allows us to negotiate within the framework of the bylaw itself. I think that's what the intent of that clause is.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm not a lawyer. This has been reviewed by town council. I'll give you an example of what I think the intention here is. For example, if we have a public meeting on this, and as chairman, I might sense that the sentiment is close, we could say internally that, if we all agreed on it, internally that we would like to have a unanimous vote. That's establishing a rule within our committee. I believe what is referred to here would require, particularly if we're talking about regulation, would require a, another warrant and a change to the general law as we have it written here. Again, I'm not a lawyer and I can't say that for any certainty, but I can say that town council has looked at this and did not mention that one phase at all.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? We're going to vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, which is to remove the mentioned sentence, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, leaving it as is, not removing anything, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, the amendment fails. We're now talking about the original motion as originally read. So anybody would like to comment on the values or lack thereof of the motion, please?
Barry Sussman, Nine Golden Circle, and the first thing I'd like to say is I commend people who put in the hard work on this article, and their dedication to the community and everybody who helped participate in it. But when I read this...
Speak a little bit more direct.
But when I read this, I find that if it affected me, and it doesn't, I would be infuriated. This is an opened-ended ticket. My house, fifteen years old, in eighty-five years becomes subject to regulation. It's just an ordinary house. Somebody is going to tell me I can and cannot do what I want to do with it. And this includes the outhouse I might have gotten the permit to put up when I first came in, and when it rots, I have to go through a process where I may be delayed one year. And there is no compensation. So it doesn't affect me. I'm thinking about the people who might have other options or other needs and have a desire to do something quickly to perhaps get funds to do something important in their lives, and this thing puts a delay on it. I have no objection if this was entirely voluntary. I have no objection if these, if the houses were identified as significant at the time of transfer to the new homeowner, but to have an ad hoc ruling where somebody can say, "My house is significant and I can't do it," I feel that's a terrible intrusion on the people who may be living in these houses. And so I think this article should be written in such a way that it includes compensation or the ability for the homeowner to opt out immediately if the circumstances or the requirements can be met based on some criteria that they would offer. They need to get rid of the property, demolish it, and sell the land so they can pay for the college education of their children or something, whatever it might be. So I would really like to see this article tabled for now and rewritten in a more encompassing, a more friendly, a more homeowner-friendly fashion.
Are you making an official motion to table this article?
And so, yes, I would like to do that now.
Okay. What tabling means is to kill an article, to do away with it for this particular meeting, and then perhaps in the future, this article will appear as is or could be amended. And there is no discussion and there is no debate on that. So, we have a motion to essentially kill this motion under this article. One, do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of tabling, it requires a two-thirds vote, all those in wanting to table this motion, to do away with it, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
I believe the nays have the two-thirds, but I'm going to ask for the counters. Please take your voter card that you received when you registered and hold it up so the counters can count it. Anybody, by the way, could challenge my voice vote, and I have been challenged, and it takes six other people to stand up and then we do this, so I think will save us some time. Raise your card if you are in favor of tabling this motion. microphone. So keep your cards up for those voting aye that you want to table or kill this motion under Article One.
Eight, from this side.
Well, no, nobody's given me a number for this side yet. No, I didn't hear it in the mic. You have to announce it in the microphone. This has been going on for several years, so of all people, I didn't hear it even. So, yep, you got to address it there, please. Thank you.
25.
Eight and 25. All those opposed, those wanting to continue to vote on the motion and not table it, please signify by raising your, your cards. We've been doubling up on the counters. Williamsburg does this, I was very impressed. So rather than having one counter per section, we'll be having somebody else counting that, and they have to agree or they count again.
19.
19.
34.
34. The ayes are 33, the nays are 53, total of 86 votes. It was, the nays got 61 percent. So the motion fails. We have Article, motion for Article 2, please. Oh, that was, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator.
I have a new calculator and it distracted me tremendously.
There may be others that are thinking the way Mr. Sussman is. Mr. Sussman, your house is not on that listing. And, and the houses that are on the listing that are less than 100-years-old are there by virtue of the fact that this town has three national historic districts. When the Department of Parks, the National Park Service, agrees to list an area as national, as a national area, as they did in Southampton in these two cases, houses that are within the geographical area that, that are there automatically go on the state inventory, the macros inventory. They go on as non-contributing buildings, which means they have no significance. So when these buildings become 100-years-old, they are not going to be significant. And I find it very hard to believe that any commission would, would make them significant when they were specifically designated as non-significant when the national historic districts were made. Southampton has two districts and the cemetery, which are nationally recognized.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please step up to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll vote. Don't, don't need permission to step up to the mic, just come forward and get in line.
Henry Barton, 51 Pomeroy Meadow Road.
A little louder, Mr. Barton.
Henry Barton, 51 Pomeroy Meadow Road. Mr. Cozeb referred to the master plan in his initial remarks. I was chair of the master plan committee, and in the workshops, the public meeting, the surveys that were taken, a theme that was repeated.
Still need to be a little louder.
The theme, a theme that was repeated again and again was the desire of the people who were commenting to preserve the historic character of the town. That probably was matched only by the desire to preserve the rural character of the town. And the master plan does not direct, but rather assigns to the historical commission the task of working on a demolition delay bylaw.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I'm Barbara Laflamme, 20 Cook Road. I would like to review for me the votes. I believe the motion to table received 33 votes, is that correct?
Yes.
The motion not to table, I believe was 53?
Yes.
If 33 equals one-third, then two-thirds would have to be at least twice the one-third, which would be 66, or 66 would be a tie, 67 would be a no vote.
So the ayes have 38 percent. The ayes need to have two-thirds. Six, you need a two-thirds majority to table.
But the noes only have 53, which is not two-thirds.
That's not the requirement. The requirement is for, for something to pass, you need a two-thirds majority, not a two-thirds to kill it essentially, or kill the motion.
Okay.
Or vote, not the motion, yes.
Sorry.
No. I, I, again, I have a spiffy new calculator. I much prefer the old primitive one because it's been much faster, so first time using it, so thank you.
Thank you.
It's teamwork. This is the whole concept of legislative body, it's everybody working together, so, yes.
Ellen DeBruin, I'm at 141 Glendale Road.
You need to really get in there.
I know.
I know, because they have to hear you.
Ellen DeBruin, I'm 141 Glendale Road. I'm also, I also serve on the Historical Commission. And I want to speak to the intent of, of the bylaw that we've worked for the town. I appreciate Mr. Barkum's comments as far as.
It, it, it's better to say the previous speaker rather than naming names, so.
The previous speaker's comments.
Yep.
As to what the town has expressed that it wants for its future. The intent of this law, we don't see this as, as, to, to block anyone from, from demolishing a dilapidated building, to sell off the land to pay expenses. We don't see this as to blocking homeowners from what they wish to do with their private property. But to preserve the historic character in this town. For instance, I'll use the example of, of my house, which is 1846, it's 170-years-old. It may not, it may not be the aesthetics, the aesthetic that some people moving into the town would want, but in the position that it's in, it has a fantastic view. It could be knocked to the ground, and it should not be because of the aesthetics of, because of someone's choice of aesthetics. It's a, it's a historical value, it adds value to the town. And all we wish to do is to provide that window of opportunity to preserve properties such as my own, which do add to this town, to that character of the town. And if we, if we're not able to do that within that 12-month window, then we're not stopping, we're not stopping homeowners from doing what they wish with their properties. That they are, they are very well welcome to do as they please after that period. But the town does deserve the, the opportunity to preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we're going to vote. Oh, yes, up right up. Again, you don't need to wait until the last person speaking.
I'd like to speak for this article. I've been around town long enough to see the times change. Back in the, maybe in the 50s, people didn't appreciate the historical value of the old buildings. One building that we were very sorry to lose was the old blacksmith shop, which was left complete with all, with the hearth and all the tools and everything and could easily have been moved. And I think any of us that knew Ms. Sudlick's house and were horrified to look in the paper and see a demolition permit, and the house was gone before anybody in town could say a word about it.
Thank you. We're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 1, please signify by saying, and it's majority vote, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion 1 passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 2, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to accept Nicholas Lane as public ways as shown on a plan entitled Pleasant View Estates Definitive Cluster Development Plan under Section 11, Southampton, Massachusetts, prepared for Chester J. and Susan Kellogg Sheets 1 through 10, and recorded in the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds Plan Book 231, Page 42.
I have a motion, no, I have a second.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this? Mr. Demon? We, we, we'd like to get the proponents, the authors of the article, to speak first, to define it, and then have everybody else speak. Actually, he was supposed to read the motion, but it's okay.
Mr. Moderator.
You can raise that if you want.
I might break it. Mr. Moderator, I would like to endorse this street acceptance as chairman of the planning board. The planning board, after duly publishing this by mass general law, public hearings held, and all the conditions met, the planning board voted 500 on December 18th, 2013, to approve the definitive subdivision plan for Nicholas Lane. And then also some revisions that were dated September 25th, 2015. All the criteria was met. The public and the abutters weighed in on this. And our final sign-off for inspections of the roadways and the plans was initiated by our highway superintendent, Randall Kemp. And I'll read just a paragraph of his letter, April 1, 2015. "At the request of the planning board, I have inspected the street identified as Nicholas Lane and finding no reason not to approve this street, recommend that it be approved. Some residual snow obscures approximately one-foot width of the edge of the roadway in a couple of locations, especially around the cul-de-stac, but at the end of particularly harsh winter, the roadway is in excellent shape with no discernible heaving due to frost. The curbing, surface grading, and visible portions of the stormwater management system all appear to be constructed in accordance with the approved subdivision plans." Thank you, Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this? Please step forward. State your name and address.
Certainly. I'm Gail Santoro, I live at 83 Pleasant Street. And I want to speak in opposition to this particular article.
Right, right into the mic when you hold that up to read.
A little better, maybe?
I've learned that finally, after all these years.
I'm just wondering, when someone says, "I approve the street because the street's properly built," does that mean I approve for the township to pay for the maintenance of the street? We live in a rural community, many of us have long driveways. Mine's 150-feet. No one plows any part of it for me. Many people here have driveways that are 200 and 300-feet because we choose to live not right on the road, but back in our property where we can be surrounded by trees. I myself have lived in developments where homes were built in a beautiful wooded area, way removed from a public byway. But you know what happened there? The people who bought and chose to buy those homes, they chipped in in a homeowners association and they paid to get their driveways plowed the same way I do and the same way most of my neighbors do. We have one neighbor on, on Pleasant Street, I think his driveway's a half a mile long. He, I don't think he snowblows it, he probably pays someone to do it. You either plow it yourself or he pays someone to do it. And in a town where our own highway guy tells us that it's tough to even get around to get these roads plowed, we don't have money. We all know we don't have money. I don't see why we should take on the maintenance and plowing of a road that serves, in this case, 10 people. But it isn't just Nicholas Lane, there are many others on the books tonight and many others in the works that will ask us to maintain their private driveways for them. And I object to that. So I would make a motion to table this at least, or withdraw it.
We have, we have a motion to table, and that means to kill the article. There will be no debate. Do we have a second? Motion made and seconded to kill this article. All those in favor of, of tabling, killing the article, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The nays are over the two-thirds, so the motion to table dies. Would anybody like to continue addressing this article?
Mr. Moderator, Gary Swanson, 72A East Street. Just a question of the planning board, actually. I have no objection, no problem with accepting the, the street, you know, provided that it meets town standards and so forth. My question is, once we have, we have adopted and approved the street, who is the actual owner? Have we transferred title of the street? That appears in the registry that that land called Nicholas Lane and the others actually are land owned by the town of Southampton. Is that correct?
Well, let's, let's address your comments to me. Let's get an answer for your first question about the Nicholas Lane.
We have in hand on both warrants tonight, quitclaim deeds conveying the easement rights to the town of Southampton by the owners drawn up by their attorneys.
Does that answer your question? And it was, who owns the, the, the street? Who owns the road after this vote? That was part of that question.
Well, to my understanding, and again, I'm not an attorney, but to my understanding, after the street acceptance, the town of Southampton will, by virtue of accepting the street, will own it.
Thank you. So the answer was Southampton owns the street after the, if the vote is approved of the motion tonight? Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion to accept Nicholas Lane under Article 2, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 2 passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 3, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to accept Sarah Lane as public ways as shown on a plan entitled Deer Run Estates, Southampton, Massachusetts, prepared for Edward H. Guenner Jr., Sheets 1 through 7, and recording in the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds, Plan Book 228, Page 33.
Motion made, can I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Once again, Mr. Moderator, under the provisions of the previous warrant and the subdivision rules and regulations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the zoning bylaws of the town of Southampton, the planning board is moving forward to ask the town to accept Sarah Lane in Deer Run Estates. And the plan was approved, the definitive subdivision plan was approved on August 4th, 2012 by a vote of 400 and was then later adopted with the as-built plan.
and was then later adopted with the as-built plans on September 16th, 2015. And once again, after all the criteria, the highway superintendent inspects the roadway and the drainage, et cetera. And this is his comments dated September 24th, 2015. "At the request of the planning board, I have inspected the street identified as Sarah Lane in Deer Run Estates subdivision and recommend that it be approved. Sarah Lane conforms to town requirements. I have observed this street over two winters. It is in excellent shape with no discernible heaving or damage due to frost. The curbing, surface grading, and visible portions of the stormwater management system all appear to be constructed in accordance with the approved subdivision plan." Thank you, Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent.
Thank you. Any comments? Any other questions, concerns? Again, just step up to the mic. Seeing none, we're going to vote. Majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article Three to accept Sarah Lane, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article Three passes by majority. May I hear the motion for Article Four, please?
Mr. Moderator.
You're good.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote, to pass over Article Four, Acceptance of Town Roads, Old Harvest Road.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we give a brief explanation why we're passing over? Yeah, please.
Once again, for the third time and the criteria that you have heard for the other previous two warrants, although Old Harvest Road was approved by the planning board and the as-built plans approved, the final inspection was not to the specifications and liking of our highway superintendent Kemp. He would really like to see it undergo one more winter before he decides on the road. And then possibly that we would, that meeting his satisfaction would bring this for approval at the May town meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion and seconded to pass over this article. Any other comments? Seeing none, we're going to vote. All those in favor to pass over, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article Four passes unanimously. And may I hear a motion for Article Five, please? Say hard. As is our custom, our new custom, the chair of the CPA committee will read the motions. And we have a mic right there. We're all set for you.
I move the town to vote to transfer the amount of $18,752.89 to fund the completion of the Labrie Fields. Said sum shall be taken from Community Preservation Surcharges Undesignated Account.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Would you like to address the, oh, actually?
Our town accountant will address.
Okay. I knew that. Vicki Morrow.
Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant, Palmory Meadow Road. The amount that we owe is what we owe the actual contractor for work that was completed. The reason that we still owe them money is we had some change orders from Dusset and Associates, who was the design architect for the field. And we did not get prior approval. You know, when we got these change orders and we paid them because we had to pay them and the contract had changed, and those got paid out of the account that we need to pay this last bill from. Now, these were all prior to me and Randall coming here. And so they didn't actually make it to my office so that we could verify these.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, right up on top, the Undesignated Funds Available for the CPAs there for your information. Historical Preservation Funds Available, Open Space Recreation, and Community Housing. Usually, we have those questions. Who would like to speak? Anybody? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Five, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article Five passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Six, please?
Move the town to vote to transfer the amount-
It's a little closer, maybe. Just pick it back up. So, yeah, there you go.
A little bit more. Is that better?
That is.
Okay. Move the town to vote to transfer the amount of $22,500 to fund installation of handrails at Newtown Hall, Larrabee Building. Said sum shall be taken from Community Preservation Surcharges Undesignated Account.
Thank you. And I believe you were designated to speak on that, Mr.? Oh, I need a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Oh, you're right on top of everything. Thank you, Charlie. Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Well, I'll start by simply saying the reason that the Community Preservation Funds can be taken to do this is that our funds can be used for accessibility issues to a historic building. If this was simply a repair, we couldn't do it. But because it is an accessibility issue. And I will defer now to Mr. Kinnick.
Thank you.
This seemed to self-generate. When we were working on establishing the automated doors on the town hall, it became apparent to a lot of people that there was no safety handrails for walking that sidewalk from the senior center to the double doors. So what we did is we got three quotes to try to figure out what it would cost to put in basically two handrails on that side of the building so that people have a safe means of getting to the double doors, especially in the wintertime. The hope is that this article passes to try to get these installed before the new year.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Six, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article Six passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Seven, please?
Move the town to vote to transfer the amount of $3,200 to the Historical Commission to find supplementary costs of moving the historic safe from the old town hall to the new town hall, Larrabee Building. Said sum shall be taken from Community Preservation Surcharges Historical Preservation Account.
Thank you. Motion made. Can I have a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address that? Mr.?
I would like to defer to-
Yep. Step forward.
Mr. Warren?
Don Warren, Southampton Historical Preservation Commission, 230 College Highway. One of the projects that has come to us for consideration is the preservation of a antique safe, a good-sized antique safe that was made by E.C. Morrison Company in Boston, Massachusetts, around 1890-95. The safe is in excellent mechanical condition, without any significant wear to the lock mechanism or anything. And it has a lot of original artwork on the sides, the front door, and the inner doors. Space is desperately needed over in the new town hall for the keeping of records. And so a plan was generated to move that safe from the old town hall to the new town hall. So this, funds for this are to cover that and also to cover some engineering costs that go along with it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment? Questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Seven, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article Seven passes unanimously. May I hear a motion, please, for Article Eight?
Move the town vote to transfer the amount of $6,000 to the Park Commission to be used to fund the costs for the installation of a playscape at Conant Park that would serve the needs of younger children. Said sum shall be taken from Community Preservation Surcharges Open Space Recreation Account.
Thank you. I have a motion. Can I have a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this? Mr. Warren?
I'll start.
Okay.
If I need help, Mr. Warren or-
All right.
Mr. Reed can help.
You've got backup.
The playscape has, there's a picture of it back on the table, by the way, if anyone wants to look at it. It is for children 2 to 5 years old and would be in an area near enough the pavilion so that parents of small children would not have to try to contain their children. And they certainly don't want them going across to the larger playground. This was purchased, or will be purchased, but with funds from the Congregational Church. And these are funds that were given to the church in memory of Reverend Dee's little baby.
Ledger, yeah.
Obid. So it's the installation costs and... Is there someone that wants to?
You want to add something to that, Mr. Reed?
Certainly. My name's Mark Reed, Chairman of the Park Commission.
Address. Street address.
166 Brickyard Road, Southampton, Massachusetts.
Great.
01073.
Thank you.
Remember some things. We've had a lot of requests to develop a play area on the pavilion side because of security of people that rent the pavilion. The First Congregational Church came before the Park Commission to donate $5,400 to purchase the playscape for younger children. We are requesting this money so that we can install it, prepare the base, and put up a fence around it to satisfy the requests of the town.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we're going to vote. Motion under Article Eight. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article Eight passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Nine, please?
Move the town to vote to transfer the amount of $80,000 to the Southampton Youth Athletic Association to fund a portion of the creation of a new Little League fields at Conant Park. Said sums shall be taken from Community Preservation Surcharges Open Space Recreation Account.
Thank you. Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
I'm going to defer.
I pointed over because I saw somebody working their way down, so I-
Yeah, I'm going to defer to one of the authors of the wonderful project. By the way, the book's back there and you can look at it.
Okay, there's a book back on the table somewhere if anybody wants to look at the project, so.
How you doing? Jim Boyle, 26 Bisnet Circle, Southampton. What we had hoped to do is with the different teams that we have, we had a shortage of major league fields. So we're hoping to take an existing T-ball field and make it into a Little League, Major League field, which would be a 60-foot diamond. We're hoping to rip down the fence and get a new backstop, build new dugouts, and get a new scoreboard in. And basically, we would be using the field, the existing T-ball field off of Clark Street. So it's already there, making the job fairly easy. And, you know, we got okay from Park Commission and everybody seems to be behind it pretty good, so.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Floyd, this, these funds should be coming, the last two, I'm sorry, should have been coming from undesignated. This one especially needs to come from undesignated.
I have an amendment to this motion to change the wording from Open Space Recreation Account to Undesignated. Do I hear a second? A motion made and seconded. All those in favor of mending this motion as read, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Okay, now we have an amended motion to discuss. If somebody, please step forward.
Mr. Moderator, Pat Fabozzi, 83 Pleasant Street. I just have some questions. What is the total that's going to cost for the cost of the field? How many children will this affect? And how many fields were we actually short?
Okay. Do you have any answer behind you? Are you stepping up to the mic to address it to me?
This particular field would serve four different, actually, six different teams, two major teams and four minors teams. Where with the T-ball, existing T-ball, they have the field that they can use. They just use it for one game a week. So they would be using it on Saturday. And what were the other two questions?
One of the questions is how many youngsters will this affect?
Probably about 100.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Yeah, good. Okay. Any other comments?
She asked the total cost.
The total cost, the total cost at this point, what we have is $67,000.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I see a hand waving and coming forward. Okay.
Pat Fabozzi, 83 Pleasant Street. If we're asking for 80,000, you said right now the total is 67,000? Perhaps I didn't hear it right, but the difference in the money, I didn't understand.
We heard a figure of 67,000 and there's a motion for 80,000, so somebody?
As we have seen tonight in another one of our articles, sometimes things don't come in right where they are supposed to. And so by voting a little bit more, that is going to be able to take care of that if there are additional expenses. If they are not used, they go back to Community Preservation Undesignated. But it will save them, they'd like to have this work done for the spring. And it would save them suddenly in the spring, finding they wouldn't be ready.
Do you understand that? Thank you. Next.
Larry Enright, Courtney Lane, Southampton, Mass. I just wanted to note that Jim had mentioned it was going to impact about 100 children. That'll be about 100 children this year and next year and the year after that, and the year after that. So for the next couple decades here, we're going to have hundreds of children, you know, hundreds-plus children every year. So, you know, we're really talking about an impact of, you know, a few thousand kids in our community and from that end of it. So it's not just $80,000 going towards 100 children from that end of it.
Good point. Thank you. Yes?
Carl Keeners, County Road. I just have two questions. Is the Youth Athletic Association a municipal organization?
Okay, second question.
If not, what oversight does the town have for this money?
Okay, question is about SYAA. Are you municipal?
I'm Wally Merrick, the current SYAA president. I reside in West Hampton. Can I speak?
All those in favor of having him speak, since he hasn't spoken before, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Great. Please speak.
Great. The question was on the oversight. Great. The question was on the oversight for the money. Does CPA money gets... Does CPA money get funded to Southampton, SYAA directly?
Well, yeah, you need to really make believe it's pistachio or maple walnut or whatever your favorite flavor is.
The $80,000 gets funded to SYAA for us to... To pay the contractors?
The question is, is SYAA a municipal entity?
We are not. No, we are not.
Okay, that answers one. And then the other question was regarding the authority of the town. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Who's... Who has the oversight?
Generally, in this case, if there is a question that comes up, it has been the Board of Selectmen. We have funded other non-town organizations, such as the Historical Society, and in fact, even the ramp as you're going now into the church here in town. So, those were done by those bodies, but if there were to be a question...
The Select Board would be the... That answer your question? Vicki?
Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant. Basically, in speaking with the auditors when they were here last week, the SYAA would be considered a vendor of the town, and we would pay them that money directly. But having... Being on that board and being the Town Accountant, I can kind of watch where money goes if we need to.
Okay. Mr. Reed? Thank you.
Mark Reed, Brickyard Road, Chairman of the Park Commission. We've been working very closely with SYAA.
Yeah, a little clutter.
We've been working very closely with SYAA to... As well as Hampshire United on the use of the fields. Conant Park is in dire need of upgrading, so that we will be working very closely. Any improvements to the park need to be approved by the Park Commission prior to any work being done.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
John Martin, 106 Clark Street. Since the SYAA is a private organization, and it says we're transferring the amount of $80,000, I would like to amend it to say we transfer the amount up to $80,000, and what's not used will stay in the proper pot, if you will, because I don't know if there's a vehicle for SYAA as a private organization to give it back to them. So by funding it up to only what's needed, but not to exceed $80,000, I think that'll take care of it.
We have a motion to change, transfer the amount of $80,000 to up to $80,000. Motion amendment suggested... Do we have a second? All those in... Any discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending as read up to $80,000, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. So we have an amended, double amended motion. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 9, where we've changed the account to Undesignated and up to the amount of $80,000, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 9 passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 10, please?
Mr. Moderator, move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $7,500 to replenish the Larrabee Building Expenses Account. Said sum shall be taken from Operating Stabilization.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Second. Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please? And this needs a two-thirds vote. Yes, sir?
Mr. Moderator, this is uncharacteristic of what I typically do, but... Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Very good. This is uncharacteristic of what I usually do when I go to a town meeting, but I need to make a motion to increase this amount to $30,500. The reason being, as we were doing the study relative to the handicap doors and the handrails and everything else, the principal cause of a lot of the concerns was the ice buildup on top of the town hall. That ice buildup, it seems to be determined, is the fact that there's no insulation in the attic of the town hall. And there has not been since the refurbishment of the building. We discovered this after the article was submitted as a warrant article, so therefore, it doesn't include that amount of money. But if we do not act on that tonight, we will not have funding to address the insulation problem prior to this winter. So I make that motion.
I do not accept the motion. It's beyond the scope of the article as posted in the warrant. We don't allow a dollar more. So I deny that motion, and I would ask that a follow-up special town meeting address that. And I would ask for a motion under this article that I will accept.
Thank you.
Having said that, it doesn't state where we can pick and choose. There are many great reasons for increasing, but the... What we abide by is not to increase from the warrant. Yes, motion for this article. I need a motion. Do you want to read it?
They already made a motion.
No, I didn't accept it.
But they made... Liz made the $7,500 motion, and then Charlie amended the motion.
Sorry, my bad. Yep, no, please speak.
So I'm Heather Bridgeway-Lutz. For those who don't know, I'm the Town Administrator. You guys voted me to be able to speak a few meetings quite a few. All right, so just some information on this article. So Article 10's Larrabee Building, 7,500. You'll see a note underneath it, which simply just refers to the fact that we need expenses in order to maintain and repair the current new town hall offices at 210 College Highway. In FY16, we had originally budgeted $12,697. Unfortunately, we've had several required inspections, some things that had failed, and we've incurred additional expenses for various things like HVAC problems, gutter repairs, and other. If you look into your second packet of information, the one that has all of the attachments, it was handed out, I believe, separately in addition to the motions. On page five of that piece, it's Article 10. It actually breaks down Larrabee Building for you. Just to go over this really briefly, there's two sections on the paper. There's a top form, a top half and a bottom half. Top half is services provided and charged thus far. So these are things we... Some of these things, if they say yes under scheduled expense, we had budgeted for them. If they say no, we did not budget. It was something that had come up unexpected. You'll see things in here like a boiler issue, HVAC repair issue, replacing a missing gutter. These are all things we did not plan for. We have more coming. We just found out that our elevator actually failed inspection. Apparently, what was happening is the gentleman from Bay State Elevator goes around with the state inspector from town to town to town. They had a perfect record for about 12 months. The past eight months, the state inspector has pretty much failed every single elevator he has inspected. So what ends up happening is we now have to incur an additional charge to repair the elevator to the state specifications in order for it to pass. And that is something we just found out the full cost of the other day, and that's actually going to be around $1,300. But if you look in the second half of the sheet, you'll see remaining services needed. What these are is things that are either required as annual inspections, or there's something that came up that we did not plan. Couple of things that have come up. Simplex Grinnell is an expensive one for five-year inspection of our wet system. We have a wet system in the basement of town hall, and what this allows us to do is actually works with our sprinkler system. And these inspections have lapsed. It's been more than five years since the system was installed. So in order to keep everything current, keep everyone safe, we need to make sure that gets done. You'll see some other things on here. Just to let you know, and this could very well be a special town meeting issue come January, but insulation in the roof, that's a $23,000 cost that's going to be coming up. Otherwise, we have the SNE building systems. We have a boiler system that we keep talking about at Board of Selectment meetings. What this is essentially is we have had an issue with the way the boiler system was installed. It doesn't actually push the hot water up into the faucets upstairs unless it's wintertime. So during the other times of the year, we have a lapse of trying to get hot water. That's where you have it there. At the top, you have an Unexpected Expenses breakdown and Expected Expenses from what we paid so far. So Unexpected has been $4,000 already. Expected was $11,000. We have additional work to do and additional costs to incur. Again, those are on the bottom half. The Unexpected Expenses, and mind you, this does include the insulation for the roof, is $30,000, so minus that's about another seven. And Expected Expenses that we still have yet to pay for are $2,296.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other questions? This is going to be a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 10, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 10 passes unanimously, thereby meeting our two-thirds requirement. Do I have a motion for Article 11, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $3,500 to replenish the town hall building expenses account. Said sum shall be taken from operating stabilization.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, and we need a two-thirds vote on this also? Yes?
All right, Heather Bridgeway-Lutz, Town Administrator again. All right, so on this article, so this is for the building maintenance required for the police station of what people are still referring to and what is listed in our expense accounts as the town hall. So we had expenses that have come up. We budgeted a modest $10,000. We've already expended most of the $10,000 for planned and unplanned building expenses, including repair of the emergency dispatch generator. If you turn again to the attachment packet, the next sheet, which is page six, it says Article 11 at the top, Town Hall Expenses. Again, it's broken into two sections for you. The top section, Services Provided and Charged, and whether or not it's a scheduled expense or not. Just to give you an idea here, out of what is eight items, seven of them were unexpected. We had to have electrical work, HVAC work, generator work, and HVAC work again, more generator repairs, gutter replacement, and pest control. So we've already expended the majority of the $6,067 has been unexpected expenses. We still have more to come. We have plumbing for one of the bathrooms. We have quarterly bills for water and transfer station bills. We do do an annual carpet cleaning. That's one of the least expensive items on this list. We have annual AC work, generator maintenance, septic service, and repair of gaps in the roof where birds are currently entering. So we have these various items. Again, the unexpected here is $2,876 and $2,250.
Thank you. Any comments? Any other questions? Okay, we're going to vote. The motion for Article 11 requires two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 11 passes unanimously, thereby meeting the two-thirds requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 12, please? Somebody?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $15,000 to the Norris School Facility Maintenance Account to cover the unexpected costs for facility improvements required by recent safety inspections. Said sum shall be taken from the operating stabilization.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address the motion for Article 12? We all agreed on this. We had names.
Good evening. My name is Eliza Pluta. I'm the principal here at Norris School. I live in Holyoke. We are asking for the money to be replaced back into our operating budget based...
All those in favor of the principal speaking, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Nay. We have a custom, and so you're welcome to speak any other meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. These were unexpected expenses that were due to our safety inspection this summer, as you probably heard about. And as you can see, it came to a total of about $16,000 once we finished completing the work, so we're just asking for a transfer of that $15,000.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion under Article 12, it needs a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 12 passes unanimously. Do I hear a motion for Article 13, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $2,500 to the Reserve Fund to reimburse for an unexpected expense, and the sum shall be taken from the operating stabilization.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Motion made and seconded. Thank you. Who would like to address this, please?
Mr. Moderator, Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Yeah, a little just right in, ice cream cone.
Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
This article was placed... It was placed on here to help replenish our Reserve Fund. There was an unexpected shortfall in the budgeting process, which left the Sharps program unfunded. It was originally funded, and then there was grant funding procured. The grant was applied for but not received, and the budgeted amount was removed from the budget, I guess, kind of post-review by the Finance Committee. So this was a foreseen cost, which is why we are asking for our Reserve Fund to be made whole so that going forward throughout the rest of the year, we have the ability to fund emergency expenses such as building and, you know, building repairs, unexpected costs, salary items, things like that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Patrick Mahon, 125 Pleasant Street. Could you please tell me what's the Sharps program?
I'm not an expert on the Sharps program, but these are basically depositories for hypodermic needles. You'll see them in towns and areas where instead of putting the... To speak bluntly, instead of putting the needle on the side of the road or in the gutter, it'll actually go into a plastic Sharps container so that it keeps them off the street, out of the fields, out of the schoolyards, things like that.
And to perhaps answer his follow-up question, where would that container be?
I would have to defer to the Health Department on that. They manage the program.
Does that answer your question about the Sharp program, sir? Okay, yes.
Jim Young, Millarav, Southampton. Is this the Reserve Fund? Is this the Reserve Fund for 2016 we're talking about?
Yes.
I believe the Mass General Law is, when the money goes out of the Reserve Fund, you can't put it back in. Does anybody know that for sure?
Vicki?
I don't know that for state of fact, but I can definitely find that out from the Department of Revenue.
We have a question. We don't have an answer, and so we can either table this article. We could vote on it, or we could postpone it until tomorrow and have another continuation of this meeting. So I would invite whichever way you're comfortable in going, not having the answer to your question.
I would just like to have somebody check it. I don't think you can... Should table the article because of it, because it's very important, but I think there should be some homework done.
We have a motion to table.
No, we don't.
We don't have one? Okay.
I'd just like to have someone check it out after the fact.
I understand. Thank you. Any comments? Questions? Yes?
Just a question. Can we have a vote pending the outcome of the research?
I don't think so. No. No, it's not the Select Board, no offense. We don't meet often, so no. That leads to a real slippery slope.
I make a motion to table this article until I can contact the Department of Revenue to find out all the facts.
We have a motion to table, kill this article. Do we have a second? All those in favor of tabling, killing the article, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, wanting to continue talking about it and voting perhaps, please signify by saying nay. We have a... Beyond our two-thirds, we are going to table this article. May I hear a motion for Article 14, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $650 to pay prior year's bills from fiscal year 15 to John C. Jacobic P.C. for legal services. Said sum shall be taken from operating stabilization.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Would somebody like to give an explanation?
Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant. This bill was brought to our office for payment after my July 30th deadline of any bills for the FY14 to be processed for that current year.
Okay. Any comments? Any questions? We're going to vote, and we need a nine-tenths majority to pass. We're going to vote, and we need a nine-tenths majority to pass. All those in favor of approving the motion under Article Fourteen, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article Fourteen passes unanimously thereby satisfying our requirement for a nine-tenths vote. Do I have a motion for Article Fifteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $2,172.97 to Eversource to pay prior year bills from fiscal 15 for street lighting. Said sum shall be taken from operating stabilization.
Thank you. Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this?
Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant. In processing bills in this fiscal year 16, it was noticed that there was a past due balance for street lighting, and because it was after my deadline of July 30, we need to go to town, we need to pay this bill.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, seeing none, yes?
Tammy Walounis, 298 College Highway. In regards to street lighting, this has been brought forward to the border selectments when we were trying to reduce our budget. Has anybody looked into that, why we're still paying so much when we really don't need as many streetlights on?
That goes beyond the scope of this, it's a great question and perhaps needs to be answered by the Select Board. We're under a finite umbrella of whether or not to pay this invoice with the vote at this meeting, but I do suggest you bring it up at a Select Board meeting. So we're talking about the bill, talking about the invoice. Seeing none, we're going to vote, and need nine-tenths. All those in favor of the motion under Article Fifteen to approve the invoice being paid, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. It's unanimous, and therefore meets the nine-tenths requirement. May I hear a motion for Article Sixteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $100 to Thomas Quinlan to pay prior year bills from FY15 for reimbursement expenses. Said sum shall be taken from the operating stabilization.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please?
Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant. This is the last bill that was presented for payment to my office after my deadline of July 30 for any bills needing to be paid for FY15.
Everybody hear that? Thank you. Any other questions?
Judy Keener, 168 County Road, sorry, was, I know he came to the town without the license. Should this have been something that he paid for himself as part of the agreement of getting the license before he was hired permanently?
Okay, I understand the question. Who would like to address that?
Yes, this was something that Mr. Quinlan paid for himself, and he was looking for reimbursement, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, he was waiting to get that certification of that license before he actually submitted it for reimbursement, which was past the deadline.
Thank you. That answer your question? Good. All right, anybody else? Any other comments, questions? We're going to vote then on Article Sixteen on the motion presented for us, we need nine-tenths majority for it to pass. All those in favor of the motion under Article Sixteen, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article Sixteen passes unanimously thereby meeting our requirement for the nine-tenths majority. May I hear a motion for Article Seventeen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $34,801.26 to the Fire Department for the purchase of a new cardiac monitor for the ambulance service. Said sum shall be taken from the ambulance receipts reserve for appropriation account.
Thank you. Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this? Fire Chief Workman.
John Workman, John Workman, Fire Chief.
Your street address.
Glendale, East Hampton. This is a required piece of equipment for the fire service. We were informed, we had the, our neighbors had lent us their monitor while they'd put their ambulance service together, just after the annual town meeting, he informed us that he was looking to get it back.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
How's that?
You got to direct right at.
This is a required piece of equipment for the ambulance. We were informed by West Hampton, who had graciously allowed us to use their monitor until they had requested it back just after the annual town meeting. We, I went to the Finance Board and Select Board just to try and figure out how to put this together, and as I say, it's required for the Fire Department, so this is what we came up with.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of voting on the motion under Article Seventeen, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion for Article Seventeen passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article Eighteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $1,187.94 to ambulance expenses for reimbursement of expenses incurred for leasing new cardiac monitor for the ambulance service. Said sum shall be taken from the ambulance receipts reserve for appropriation account.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, thank you. Who would like to address this? Chief Workman?
This is just the second half of that. We've been allocating funds from our expense account. We had not allowed for, we had not allowed for that, and so this is just a reimbursement of that fund so we can continue with our operating expenses.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. The motion under Article Eighteen, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article Eighteen passes unanimously. May I hear a motion, please, under Article Nineteen?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $1,500 to the Town Administrator Expenses Account. Said sum shall be taken from the Administrative Assistant Wage Line.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this?
Heather Burcherowitz, Town Administrator. So the Administrative Assistant Wage Line has an FY16 budget of $13,500. There are funds in this line that will not be used because the position was not filled for the first two months of the fiscal year. The purpose of this article is to transfer funds so that additional educational opportunities and office expenses can be undertaken in completion of, the purchasing certification program can also be completed. So instead of waiting till the end of the year to transfer funds from one line to another, the Town Administrator Expense Line went down a little bit last year, and we also had an absence in that position for my Administrative Assistant for the first two months of the year, so this is simply just using money within the budget from one line item to the next.
Thank you. Anybody like to address this more, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. Under Article Nineteen, the motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. I hear a nay? No? The motion passes unanimously. May I hear a motion under Article Twenty, please?
Mr. Moderator, move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $750 to the employment advertising. Said sum shall be taken from the Administrative Assistance Wage Line.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded, please address this.
So Heather Burcherowitz, Town Administrator again. So this goes back to the Administrative Assistant Wage Line where we did have additional funds, so we used some in the last article, and this one essentially what we're doing is we're creating a new line item for employment advertising. I know the name's not that catchy, we were trying on this one to really say what it was, but one of the problems we've run into in the past year is having unexpected vacancies in positions in town, and it's a lot of money for these small departments, especially when they only have an expense line of $500 or $1,000 to start incurring $100, $150 in expenses to post and advertise for a new position, or to fill a position usually is the case when someone leaves. The purpose of this line is to have some funds set aside where we're not spending them right now, it's money that's not being used in the Administrative Assistant Wage Line, and it would allow opportunities for departments such as the Board of Recessors or the Police Department, if they have to advertise for a new job, that we can pull funds from this account instead of devastating smaller budgets.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. Motion under Article Twenty, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article Twenty passes unanimously. May I hear a motion, please, for Article Twenty-One?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to transfer the sum of $4,801 to the Insurance General Account to correct a negative balance. Said sum shall be taken from the workers' compensation line.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please? Yes?
Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant. We, this current fiscal year for 16, when we created our budget, we were on, we weren't sure of what our new insurance numbers would be because we switched insurance companies, so basically we're just using the same appropriation from town meeting, we're just transferring from one insurance line to the other based on the actual numbers we received after we voted on town meeting budget.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. Motion under Article Twenty-One, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article Twenty-One passes unanimously. May I hear a motion, please, for Article Twenty-Two?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer the sum of $5,000 to the Park Commission Wages to correct a negative balance. Said sum shall be taken from the Park Commission Expense Line.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Who would like to address this?
Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant. When the budget was created for FY16, in past practice had been, we split the park budget between wages and expenses because the Highway Department would do the mowing and charge it directly to the park wage line. This past year in 16, it was put in the expense line, and so we're just transferring the money from the expense line to the wages line to cover for the Highway Department's mowing of all the parks.
Thank you. Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Twenty-Two, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article Twenty-Two passes unanimously. That concludes our business for the night. I will entertain a motion now to dissolve our special town meeting. Second? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And thank Ms. Janine Domon, our elected town clerk, and our deputy town moderator, Kyle Keener, our counters, Chief Goyette, East Hampton media Paul Fish, and Nick Cole, and thank you for your valued participation. Give yourselves a big hand. This special town meeting is dissolved. Safe home.